Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Thank you for being here for tonight's January 6, 2020 Hingham School Committee meeting. I'm going to call to order, and please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised by Harbor Media. If anyone else in the audience intends to audio or video this meeting, could you let me know? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to item two, which is approval of minutes. So we have a few sets of minutes to approve. Does someone want to make a motion?
A move that will approve the minutes of the school committee meeting with the held with the advisory committee on December 10, 2019.
Have a second? Yes, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Next one?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on December 16, 2019.
Second?
Second.
Yes, thank you. Any discussion?
I can add a couple of things.
In 6.1, the second paragraph, the second sentence.
Yep.
It says, "That may be because fewer schools require it for admission." I think it should say that maybe because fewer schools or maybe, wait a minute. It should read, "That may be because Hingham requires students to take the final exam." Because I don't.
That doesn't make sense.
I don't know why we would require it for admission.
Are you talking about colleges requiring it?
Well, that's why I'm proposing that.
I know. I'm sorry, where is it exactly?
It's the second paragraph.
So the second paragraph, the second sentence?
Oh, got it. Karen, answer what's on your AP's end.
Oh, so I think she was saying because less colleges require them.
That's the, but that's not the AP exams. That's the.
The ACTs.
The subject tests.
And the subject tests, okay.
So.
Oh, that's right, because all of our students take the AP.
I mean, I know one of the things we talk about is that Hingham does require students to take the final, take the exam.
Yes.
And some, and other districts don't require them to take the exam. So I think that'd be a better way. Because I don't understand what admission is about, so.
Yeah. No, I think it's there.
Okay. And then on 6.2, the last sentence, this is just a typo, I believe. It says, "Kerry Nees suggested that the policy subcommittee reviews our policy addresses this, or our policy is to address this exchange instead of addresses." And then in eight subcommittee reports, under my name, the last sentence, "The PTO will meet on January 5, 2020 for a workshop to discuss how we are, how are we communicating?" The PTO was supposed to meet January 6. Got canceled today, just, but they, for a workshop to discuss how we, how are we communicating, that, I believe, was East School. That's not Foster for the workshop. I think I just reported that the PTO will meet on January 6. But I don't know where the rest of it was that.
No?
No? Okay. Then you can end it after the date and just, I don't know what that was.
So Libby asked about why don't we have a program, an exchange program to Spain or to a Spanish-speaking country, I think, right? And I said, I disclosed for the record, I would like to be reflected here, that I said that I received communication from a professor from Spain, and I have forward that to administration for their consideration, and they are looking into it. It is an exchange program similar to this. So it's under, they, you know, they're looking at it. So just wanted to have it for the record.
Does that go in the minutes somewhere?
It should go in the minutes, just because I received the communication and I wanted to, you know, it passed on to them for, so they can investigate.
Is that what we talked about at that meeting?
We did.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, so. All, well, did we, sorry, did we approve the other set or did I skip that part? I feel like I skipped that part.
Were there discussions for?
Yes, no, number two, 2.2.
Yeah.
All right, so any other discussion on that? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then 2.3, minutes of the school committee meeting.
Make a motion that will approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on December 18, 2019.
Thank you. Second? Thanks, Ness. Any discussion on those? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item three, which are questions and comments. "The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement, and we welcome questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. We have also set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for questions or comments that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If there are any guests that wish to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. And just a little bit more rules around this. Is there someone here tonight that wishes to speak? Excellent, okay, so I'll just let you know. So you'll need to come to the mic, state your name. You'll have three minutes to address, three minutes per speaker, to discuss the topic and the responsibility of the school committee, just so you know. So we, we'll take comments about things that are, that the school committee is responsible for, which include selecting and terminating the superintendent, reviewing and approving budgets for public education, and establishing goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy of others. And the public comment period is not a time that we'll debate or respond to comments made to the committee, and we are not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period, but we welcome comments and questions or things that we can come back to at another meeting and discuss. So if anyone wants to come forward? Anyone? You sure?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. If you want to, you're not a resident, because that's not, you don't have to be a resident, right?
No, yeah, sure, you can come on. Thank you. Just a, hello.
Hi there, I'm Paul Pelosi.
Hello, Paul.
I'm a teacher at the high school. And the reason why we're here tonight is because of the, you guys have known what's happened to our Tracers program. So we are at the high school right now, so we're just concerned about getting, you know, more permanent, or at least some temporary spots. Because at the high school now, we are sharing space with the woodshop, and it's not ideal because the woodshop has people in there. We've been in the classroom doing our things. So that's our, our number one concern is to just be looking for, you know, either, I think it would be a new location to where Tracers would go for the future. And just for the record, this year, we have 19 students. This is the most we've ever had. We have three girls in the program, and we've just been getting more and more successful in doing more things with, like DPW and the police department. We just built a lot of big sawhorses for them. So that's the reason we're here tonight. And we didn't know whether you guys were going to be addressing that with that warrant. It sounds like 6.3 or something like that, so.
So that is one of the warrants, one of the items we mentioned to discuss the warrant for repairs to the build, to the building 12 and building 179. So are you, are you planning to stay for the remainder of the meeting?
Yeah, we plan to stay, and I'm not sure, Kate, did you want to say anything? The other concern is for the robotics program.
Okay, yep.
Now, the robotics, they're coming up to their challenge, like, real soon.
Yes.
So they've had to move into their auto shop, so they're sharing it with the people in auto as well. So temporarily, the concern is we get something probably a little more permanent in the near future.
Thank you. We really appreciate that. Can I ask a question? Well, I will. No, that's all right. If you have a question, I will. And then I'll get to you.
So that itty-bitty, teeny-weeny, little bit of classroom with the ginormous table in it?
Yes.
You've got 19 people in that classroom?
That's what we, we've actually.
Welding, and no, you can't be doing any, you've got to be totally, like, hamstrung.
It's very difficult, but for instance, what we have doing, one of the, we're just finishing up a unit on CO2 cars. So today, we've been doing our final adjustments to the cars, building them to race them. We were able to race them today in the hallway. So we're able to use part of the woodshop at certain times. So it's not ideal.
All right. Thanks, Ed.
Paul, I know you told us when we did the tour, what was the square footage that you had in 12 for the, for the Tracers program?
For the Tracers program.
Include the storage of the, of the stock as well?
It's probably close to 3,000 square feet. And if we wanted to include space, appropriate space for robotics, it would probably be more.
Well, that's my next question. Robotics, is that, is robotics part of that 3,000?
No, not if we're including storage.
And, and what would then, what would be additional for robotics?
And again, being ideal, I'd be saying 12 to 15 hundred square feet. Because the good thing there is they are able to use our shop and our equipment when we're not there.
So it'd be nice to have a, a space that, that would be right next to each other.
Yes.
Yeah.
That would be ideal.
Yeah, okay.
Karen, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And thank you to the students that are here as well. Any other questions or comments from the audience? All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number four, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Just quickly, just to, as I do every month, give an update on our warrant of an entry findings report. We're now beginning to put data together, starting to write the report itself. We did come to, and I've shared this with Chairperson Ayer, we did come to a conclusion, we might have been a little aggressive on our timeframe, but we're going to shoot for that 24th, which is what we wanted to do in the first place. So I'm doing my best to get that done by that time. If that has to change, then I'll certainly let you know. But it's a, it's a lengthy report, and certainly getting that together now, so just updating you that that is coming together, and we're working on that right now. The second item I have is just the enrollment, January 1 enrollment, which is exactly the same as it was in December, 4,315, so no changes on that right now, which is good and stable. So nothing, nothing's changed on that. And that's it.
Thank you. Item five, communications, communications received by the superintendent.
Yeah, I'm just going to mention briefly, as much as I think this is the first school committee meeting we've had in a while that I haven't had to think about the next day might be a snow day, and so, or at least what it looks like right now, it's not going to be. So I just want to mention, we did change, and this is for the audience listening at home more than for here, we did change that I do call, I do make a personal call to families first thing in the morning. I think that, obviously, that took some people by surprise when we did that in December, and certainly apologize for that, but this will be the way that I communicate from this point forward. We have to let people know by 5:30 in the morning, we have many people, we have buses that go very early to Boston, we have, we have staff who come from a long distance away. We really need to make that decision quickly in the morning, and we need to do the best we can to get that word out communication-wise to everyone. In the past, the email system has been used to make that notification, and the fact is that not everybody reads their email in the morning or has access to an email because they're busy doing other things. And so the most effective way was by a voicemail. I will also say that I got a lot of responses after the last one to say, "A text works better." So I want to be clear, though, I don't have any capacity or capability at this time with any of our software programs to actually do a text, because I would prefer that too, and it doesn't scare people, and it doesn't wake them up, I get that. I just don't have any capability of doing that with our current software. And so on one side, I hope that it's effective. On the other side, I hope I don't have to use it and actually call anybody. I know the senior's sitting, and I'm sorry, but I know that you prefer I do it 10 more times this year, but we'll hope not. But, so we don't have to use it, but in case we do, I did include that in the newsletter I just sent out to families, to be clear again, that they will be getting a phone call. I will say, we've received some phone calls to have people removed from the system from that call. I'm going to cautious, caution everyone, when we do that, that is your emergency system. If you're removed from the emergency system, you get no emergency phone calls anywhere. And so if we were to have an emergency at a school where your child is at, or another child is at, or something's going on, you're not going to hear about that if your name is removed. We cannot alic heart this. We can't say, "For schools, no cancellations, you don't get a call. For other types of emergencies, you do." We don't have that capacity, so I encourage people to not do that, but to, to let this work its way through, and hopefully it doesn't become a nuisance. So that's it.
Thank you. Student communications, Emma?
No snow day, but half-day Wednesday, so.
There you go, close enough.
Hingham High School's DECA Club went to the District One competition last week. Gillian Brennan, Ethan Gates, Joe Kenway, and Jake Montini will move on to the state competition. Throughout last Wednesday, there was a pop-up art show in Room 103 illustrating the hidden art talents our students have. The orchestra performed in the front lobby before the holiday break. Then following that, the, that, then following that, that night, orchestra and band put on a wonderful winter concert. For parents of kids about to go through the college process, tomorrow night at 7:00 in the auditorium is a college kickoff night. On a sports front, the basketball teams play tonight, and the boys had a big win on Friday to Brighton. Also, our very own Lily Reel continues to train with the national women's soccer team as she's in Florida right now. And the student council continues to help out at the local food pantry and raise money for the Allison Clark Foundation.
Thank you. Emma? Any other communications? No? All right, new business. Sorry, I was just, all right, we'll, we'll do them in order. So 6.1, "To discuss a possible warrant article for revision, two or additional funds for the feasibility study for Foster Elementary School and act as appropriate." So that's 6.1 in your packet. John, do you want to give us a quick overview on the proposed language in here?
Yeah, so, you know, let me just start off as the, my thought here on this, getting here today would be to really discuss all the warrant articles. I know that, you know, you could act as appropriate today too, but I also think that, you know, this would be a good time to be able to have discussion with the committee to determine, you know, everybody in the committee sort of be in sync on the same topic. We could, in fact, you know, modify Thursday's agenda, which will be our workshop day, you know, just to say, to continue to discuss town warrant articles and act as appropriate then, you know, after we've had some time to vet a number of things. So, you know, with, with that in mind, so the, a couple of articles relative to, and this is 6.1, couple, couple of articles relative to the MSBA and Foster invitation into the eligibility period. The, actually, there's, I did want to pass these sheets out. So I've done some additional research into the MSBA to determine the levels of spending on the eligibility period for feasibility study, with a, a number of comps for, recent comps between 18 and 19 for the MSBA. So we know that we have appropriated $750,000 back in 2017, okay? And, you know, when we went to the MSBA, the thought was that the 750 is in a reasonable level, but there have been others that have gone at a, at a higher level. So, you know, with that, we thought we would bring to the table a discussion of whether we wanted to sort of recommend a supplemental appropriation for the feasibility study, so that the school building committee, when they get into action to do the feasibility study and into schematic design, that they would have some additional funds available to them, so that they could answer more questions that may be necessary and ultimately get us a, a better estimate when it comes time to go into the overall community for the entire vote for what the project would be. So, you know, with that, when I look back at the 2017 article, the, and I, and I know we had discussions about this last year, I think that it's, I took a red line version to that article because I wanted everybody to see what we were talking about, okay? You know, that would be sort of amending the previous article, but last year, we learned, I think from, from council, that you really can't amend the article. So, you know, with that, my, my thought was, the, you know, what we could do, and I wanted to have everybody sort of envision, this is, you know, where the, the first line of the article that says, you know, if we said that the town of Hingham appropriate, appropriate up to X number of dollars, and I think from, you know, this perspective, we have 750. If you look at those comps there, 750 is sort of in the range of place. I think the highest that I saw in that was about 1,100. I sort of added the feasibility components together so that you can kind of get a feel for, you know, what the range of these feasibility studies are. And keep in mind, I want to think, I think it's really important to stress to the public at home that the feasibility study and the money that's spent here doesn't represent incremental spending on the overall project. What it really represents is the ability to get more knowledge and more information before the estimate gets created, where we put the estimate up to the public to say, "Hey, here's what we think the project will cost. Will you approve of this?" Okay, so I think it's, I think it's really important for everybody to understand, because I know the headline, I didn't get that vision from the headline, so I wanted to kind of be clear about that, that, you know, this money is money that will be spent anyways within a project. And to the extent that you spend it upfront, it gives the school building committee that much more ability to get better information, so that when we do go to the community for a vote for the project, we have better information. Okay, so, you know, with that in mind, and I don't know if this is words, I don't, I don't swear to have the crafted words, I think what we need to do is focus on the warrant due date, which is January 21, and make sure we have placeholders in for these warrants with whatever language I come up with that I think is conceptual in nature and meets what the committee has sort of told us to do, so that we have those in place, because we will have more time to craft language, to come up with the actual dollar value, and, you know, to finalize the, the wording of the warrant before it gets published and the actual warrant gets sent to the community.
Can I just add something, John, real quick? Just as, so people are looking at this sheet, and you see these numbers at the bottom, 775K, 780, this is money actually spent on the studies that they spent, wasn't what the town's appropriated.
That's correct.
Okay. So when you see those numbers of 775, that's what that town actually spent on the feasibility study itself. And so you can see, 775, 780, 812, 750, 1.1 almost for another, that our 750 is really on the very low end of what these people do, and our concern is that it wasn't adequate, obviously, to, to let the building committee do its job. Okay, just want to make sure they understood that.
I mean, and having known that and having been through an MSBA project before, when I, when we did go to the MSBA, they, I sent our vote language over to the MSBA with that amount, and they came back and said, "Your vote's fine, send us the papers." Okay, so, you know, the MSBA would work with us with that, within that level too, the 750 level. But once again, if you go with the 750, we'll get restricted on the number of questions that we can get answered during feasibility. We'll still get a good estimate, we'll still have a vote for the public, it's not like, boom, you can't do the project, but, you know, it would be very prudent, in my view, to, you know, try to ask the town for a supplemental to that, to that 750, so that the school building committee has a little more money to spend. So I mean, if, and, and any article, I think, would be worded exactly the way the current article is, is worded, except for if you just replace that first line with saying that the town of Hingham appropriate up to, let's call it $300,000 or $350,000, and make an even 1.1 million, to supplement the previous $750,000 appropriated for the purpose of paying cost of feasibility study for Foster Elementary. And then the rest of the language continues, because this vote will still have to be in format that's acceptable to the MSBA. And this was MSBA's language, with the exception of the other red line that you see, is there's no more predication on being accepted into the eligibility period. So that line would be struck as well. So that's, that's, that's one piece of this. The other piece of the existing warrant language that I just became a little concerned with when I reread the articles from back in 2017 was just the, just the establishment of the building committee in number four, where it just says, "authorize said committee to expend up to 750 for the foregoing purposes." And, you know, question of, do we have to, you know, change that, so that, do we say, "So the school building committee can expend all monies that are appropriated for such purposes instead of setting, setting a number to it, because now we'll be in this process." Then I guess that makes, right, because, I mean, I don't know if that 750 restricts, but I think it's a question worthy of asking council, so that we know, do we have to do something to change that, so we don't restrict the school building committee from spending the money that ultimately gets appropriated by the town to put under their authority to spend?
I did take a look at some warrant articles for other towns who have done feasibility studies, and a lot of them don't put a number on there. They just authorize the school building committee to expend money for the project with the MSBA. So it's sort of, that makes sense, I think, not to cap it.
The only thing is that we have right now appropriated up to 750,000. And, and we are concerned that that 750,000 may not be quite enough.
Right, but if you take up, you take up a number, then you're not capping it at 750.
I would have to still put it for vote.
You're worried about losing them.
Yeah, I would be afraid of losing it, the 750.
So at least with the 750, we know we have it.
But what about the rest of the project? Because I think, isn't that the point? Is you're restricting the building committee from spending to that 750? Was that the concern?
Yeah, it's kind of, I, I, I mean, I think I have to ask council about this, because when I read this, I think there's got to be the ability for the school building committee to spend all funds now that will be appropriated for this. And, and this here, in the creation of the school building committee, I don't know if that restricts them from sev, just to spend 750,000. That's why I would prefer to ask council, because I don't know.
I'm in favor of increasing the amount.
I'm in favor of modifying what the school building committee is allowed to do. My question is, have you talked to council about these articles, if they even still stand? Because my understanding is you can't modify a vote of town meeting. It has to be a new vote. So have you talked to council about if we, like, vote to cancel these and have brand-new articles that restate exact, something different? Like even reformulating the school building committee to a 2019 school building committee with the same people and, you know, but that's what, I have that question of if you can modify an existing town meeting article.
I wouldn't intend to modify. I would, I would first ask, can we just to, can we, can we put a supplemental to allow an additional amount of funding? And also, can you have another article that authorizes the 2017 building committee to spend any and all monies that are appropriated for the purposes of Foster, you know, of the Foster project? So I wouldn't ask to modify it, I was simply asked to have another authorization that would allow this to happen.
Okay, I, I would be more comfortable if you got all those answers from legal counsel. To me, it sounds like you're modifying the article, so. To me, it sounds like you're modifying the article, so if that's not legally what is happening, fine, but...
Right, I mean, I think the question is whether we got to put placeholders in, I mean, I'm certainly going to try to find these answers out, but I need to know what answers to find out from the committee, and then I'll be happy to find out.
Right, so I'm, the subject matter, I'm, I'm all perfectly fine, I would just want to know what exactly the legal requirements are to have the article stand on its own and be clean and move forward.
I have a question?
Yeah, sure.
So I just want to make sure I understand that if we authorize the school building authority to spend more than 750,000, that they could say they spend another 250,000, so for an even million, we're going to get a million dollars' worth of answers. If we don't authorize this, and we stick with the 750, then we're going to get 750,000 worth of answers. And then we're still going to have to go and get more answers and spend the money anyways as part of the building project. So we're just saying, let's spend it now as part of the feasibility study, have, and have more answers to bring to town meeting, so that we're not scrambling after the feasibility study, and which will, you know, be hopeful that we'll then be invited to actually get the grant, and then have to spend the money anyways to answer those questions.
I think that was well phrased. I mean, that's exactly, I think that's exactly, that's exactly the point that I was trying to get forward, I think.
Okay.
That is, that's it, we're buying answers, and either way, as you see on that sheet, you see what the total cost of this design work and construction work is, and it far exceeds the 750, or this 1 million, or this 1.1, or whatever figure the committee may ultimately come out with, and then the big key is, you know, the legal protocol for, you know, is it effectively an amendment, or can you supplement? I, I know that, I do know for sure that I have sent that vote language to the MSBA, and it's approved, she said, send me the official papers with the count by the clerk, and you're good on that front, with the 750.
Right, okay.
So, the long-range planning subcommittee met this evening, and we are in full support of submitting a placeholder, and I think that's, that's what we ought to perhaps consider tonight, is authorize the business director to, you know, draft a warrant article and do a placeholder there, and give him the authority, like we have done in the past, to work with council to draft the proper language. Time is very limited, the deadline to submit the warrant article is the 20th, I know we are meeting on Thursday, so, I mean, like John said, if we don't vote on this tonight, we can perhaps vote this, on this on Thursday, and hopefully by then, sure, John could have a little additional information, but that's, essentially, that's what we would be doing is, you know.
Right.
It could be next Thursday, too.
Yeah, it could be, and it probably would have to be, yes.
Yeah.
It'd probably wouldn't, it'd be tough to get it done this Thursday, because in order to have it done this Thursday, we have to have a meeting, not just, we can't just tie it onto the workshop, because we have to vote, so in a workshop, we're not voting, so we'd have to post a meeting, so we need 48 hours, all that, so it might be...
You could also, I think you could still, I mean, you could still, we voted last year, I think, and the workshop, when you meet, I think you can do some votes, you know?
I think, I feel like we have a meeting, yeah, I feel like we have a meeting.
Do a combo meeting.
Which is, I mean, easy to do, we just need the 48 hours.
Just have to post the agendas.
John, would it be helpful if you had a number, a suggestion of a number to proceed with as you do your due diligence?
Yeah, if you wanted to, we'll point on that, that would be helpful.
I would think it would be.
But I'm curious about how, what Carrie's research showed, that what they didn't specify an amount.
Well, I think because they weren't, so we have a warrant article in place from 2017, and now we need to kind of fix it, I guess, or add to it, and these towns, they just had one, so it was basically, you know...
So we could write something that says that the school building authority can spend more money than 750 if we need it? Like, it's pretty simple.
That doesn't make sense to me, I'm sorry.
No, you need to have an amount.
I think you need to have quantified.
But she's saying that they didn't quantify it, is that what I'm hearing?
So according to council from last year, you cannot modify a prior year's warrant article, so you cannot modify it. So we either can stick with the one that we have from 2017, which appropriated 750,000, or we can do a new warrant article that would make the amount a million 250, or a million, or potentially, or just say, an amount appropriate to complete a feasibility study, period, which some other towns have done.
But we would risk the 750 that was already allocated.
But are the warrant articles that you're looking at on the other towns, is that just focused on the responsibilities of the school building committee? Because there's probably then another warrant article that authorizes a set amount of money that the town was allocating, I can't, I mean, that, that'd be pretty amazing, the school building committee is just doing whatever they want to do.
You're right.
Oh, it wouldn't fly in our town, that's for sure.
No, no. Okay. Yeah, so Concord has, they allocated 1.5 million. So let's do 1.5 million.
Well, that, that's not...
The meeting that we all attended, I came away with a recommendation from several different sources, that 750,000, as much as it is, it's a lot of money, may not be enough. And to me, what I came away with, why tie the hands of the, of the building committee at this juncture? If you don't need it, you don't use it, but if you, if you need it, and it's not there, then it's a Chinese fire drill to get, to get it.
Right.
So I, I think, I'd like to suggest that we give John a sense of direction on a number, maybe a range, that he can, that he can do the due diligence to have the proper terminology to work parallel with or in conjunction with the 2017 warrant article, and the best way to, to generate a little bit more for the, for the feasibility study, that's what I came away with.
Yeah.
Yes, I would, yeah.
I would suggest 1.5 million, because you don't have to spend it all, but you can, if you need it.
I would second that.
Okay. Are people comfortable with 1.5 million?
But I think we still need a question answered about whether we can...
Yes.
Have supplemental versus...
No question about it, absolutely, absolutely. That's not contingent upon moving forward, because my sense is from you is you're going to move forward with that, no matter, either way. If we can do the supplemental, then obviously to do the supplemental, but if not, then you'll ask us to draw, or the attorneys to draft language, then for a warrant, that'll be 1.5 million, and scrap the last one, basically, if that's happening. Either way, so it sounds like to me that's what you, you're asking us to do, just that I'm clear.
Whatever's legally appropriate.
Yeah, whatever's legally... We learned last year that... That makes sense, whatever's legally appropriate.
But legally, from the MSBA, and legal from town council and the town moderator of what's appropriate.
Yeah.
Up to, right.
Up to 1.5.
Up to 1.5, right. So given the research that has been done to date, and what we've heard from other, seen from other communities, other meetings that we've had with advisory, with Board of Selectmen, building committee input, the school committee, the school department, that the, it appears that an amount of one, up to 1.5 million is potentially appropriate amount of money that needs to be spent on a feasibility study. And while it is an increase since 2017, there's a lot of very good reasons for that, one being three years has gone by, the costs have gone up, but also because there's more information that you can get out of the feasibility study that we may not have been anticipating back in 2017 when we started the process. So...
Give me a second.
Okay, all right. So John, you'll work with council to draft?
Yep. So, so we're talking about the 1.5 million to get an appropriation for that amount. In total, however, we may do it, whether we can do it via supplemental, or whether we need to do it with a complete revote of an article.
Yep, all right.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Ray Estes raised his hand from the building committee, vice chair of the building committee, I'll let you introduce yourself.
Good evening, Ray Estes, 92 Ford Hill Street, vice chair of the school building committee. So first, I agree with Liza, I don't know if I've ever said that in public before. So I, I know we had the holidays, but we met on the 18th, and I had hoped that maybe by now, there would have been consultation with town council, maybe the moderator, to kind of get this answer. You clearly cannot amend prior articles and change the vote of a prior town meeting. I think the question that we had proposed three weeks ago, and has kind of been batted back and forth, is can it be a supplement, or does it have to be a, you know, rescinding of the prior and all-new articles? So I don't know the answer to that, I think the easiest thing would be to craft a supplemental article, if you're inclined to do that. If I could, one, I think, however you characterize your meetings about the budget, if it's a public meeting that's posted under public meeting law, you can have a vote, as long as it's on your agenda. So it doesn't matter how you characterize it, that's just my two cents on that. To clear up kind of some discussion about some answers, more answers, that's not really how it works. So 750,000 is not going to buy us, like, some of the answers, but if we had more money, we could get better answers, that's not really how it works. So there's a process. Starting April 1, we're going to begin to, the process of hiring an OPM, owner's project manager, and we do that in conjunction with the MSBA now, is a new process, and then we'll go through a process of hiring a designer, an architect, right? When we worked on the middle school, I think the feasibility number was 600,000. We, we had no reason to believe that it wasn't going to be sufficient, but after we hired an OPM and we hired a designer, we had discussions with the architect, and they said, well, in the event that we're going through the process of feasibility, and it looks like maybe it's not enough money, we'll work with you, because they're going to be the architect on the project, whatever that project is going to be, whether it ends up being a renovation, addition, or a new construction, based on the decisions that are made collectively by the committee and the MSBA. So I think one option is, you don't have to do anything, okay? You could stick with the article as is and the 750, knowing that it's possible it may not be enough, but we're not going to need to even think about that until several months down the line, right? We hire an OPM, we hire an architect, we're not going to need necessarily more money on April 1, or even May 1, or even June 1. There's a process, and it starts with, with the architect comes engineers, that'll do kind of additional studies that will kind of work off of the stuff that we did two years ago to get some initial investigative answers. And then they'll put, they'll start to put together a space summary based on a template that the MSBA provides, and they'll look at our educational program and determine, okay, what, what do you need in order to, and can we do this with your existing building? Can it be expanded, can we, and they'll do kind of conceptualized costs about what it would be to renovate versus perhaps new construction. And then they'll start, once they come to, you know, an idea about what's the right path to go, they'll start to work on schematic design. But if you recall, the special town meeting for the middle school in 2011, when we got up in front of town meeting and asked them to vote for the, for the full project construction money, we had no renderings of any design behind us, we had no schematic design that we were sharing with anybody, that had been, it's conceptual, it's schematic, it's not actual hard design on paper. So it's going to take some time, so, so one option is do nothing now, and if during that process, we find out that, okay, maybe the 750 isn't quite enough, then we could probably work with the architect, the designer at that point, the same way we did with AI3 in the past, and presumably, we're moving forward with a project of some sort, so there's going to be funding, presumably, of some sort, MSBA participation, and we could kind of make it up in the construction part. That's a little bit of what we did with the middle school anyway, so that's, that's one possible route. The other route is have a supplemental article, and it's whatever town council and the town administrator feel is appropriate, I mean, I, I think we, we kind of asked Tom Mayo that on the 18th, and said, I thought he was going to check with town council and trying to get that answer, so maybe he already has some information on that, so just, you know, discussion on that. So just with respect to the study itself, we're going to do a feasibility study, it's going to be the appropriate feasibility study that's going to provide the appropriate solution for Foster, right, whatever that's going to be, and it's going to be the appropriate solution that the MSBA also is on board with and approves. So it's not going to be the solution that only a certain amount of money will pay for, it's going to be whatever, right? So whatever the necessary solution is, that's what we're going to pursue, and based on, you know, the information we had three years ago, we thought it was going to cost about 750 for that. It might cost more based on comps, we don't know that for sure, but it looks like it might, so maybe not a bad idea to ask for it, but you don't necessarily have to right now, because I think there's time, keeping in mind that, you know, we start this spring, you go through a process, we might even have an opportunity, town meeting a year from now, because we, you know, I don't know where we'll be, keeping, you know, keeping in mind, if, if, if we were going through the schedule that we followed with the middle school, we'd, we'd be moving faster, but we can't move faster because of the MSBA's schedule. So there's an extra year built in to this schedule, whether we like it or not, so there's more time, I don't think it's as emergent, that's just my thought on it. Not to dissuade you from moving forward with what you're discussing, I don't know if another 750 is the right number or not, it's going to be not to exceed or up to, obviously, and obviously, you're only going to spend money that's necessary, and everyone's looking, and no one's doing anything that's, you know, inappropriate, obviously. So whatever you think is, is right. School building committee can also come together and meet, if we need to look at anything or discuss anything, happy to work with John, if, if, you know, you'd like, or he feels that's appropriate, or, you know, we're happy to do anything, I think, that we can to help. That's, any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you very much, Ray, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All right, so, yeah, everyone good? All right, thank you, thank you. All right, I'm going to move on to 6.2, which is to discuss the warrant, a potential warrant article for feasibility funds in consideration of a statement of interest for replacing Plymouth River's school windows and act as appropriate. John, do you want to give us a quick update on just what the, what you're looking for, what we're looking at here?
Right, so we, we had talked before about the possibility of doing a statement of interest this year for Plymouth River windows, an accelerated repair project with the MSBA. So I went and I took a look at some, like, the comps for some accelerated repair projects for feasibility, but in design and construction, excuse me, in design and construction bidding for a window project, and, you know, with that, if we were to do the SOI with the Plymouth River, and if we were to get accepted, then the MSBA would, and I don't know all the rules on the SOI for accelerated period, but the, the MSBA would require that we receive funding within so many months of being accepted, and that could be nine months, it might get to April, or it might get to, it might be early, if they accepted us in June or July, then we'd have so much time to get... If they accepted us in June or July, then we'd have so much time to get the funding, okay? But in light of that, and the thought, and knowing that we have the window account from the Alliance property that's already set up for, you know, contribution towards the Plymouth River windows, that, you know, it might be appropriate this year to go for a warrant article for the feasibility and engineering and bidding of the Plymouth River window project, okay? And, you know, that amount, when I looked at sort of the comps within the MSBA, that would be about maybe $450,000. And the overall window project, if I was looking at comparables, it's probably going to be somewhere between 2.6 and 3.2 million dollars, okay? But in any event, the thought about, you know, this discussion would be, do we want to go forward this year and secure feasibility and engineering and construction bidding funding for Plymouth River windows and use the specific account set up for that purpose, the Plymouth River window accounts, to take, you know, have an appropriation made so that if we get invited, we could go forward? But I wouldn't, and then the other thing too, was like, if we did that, would we make it predicated on getting invited, or would we just not put any predication within the article? And just say, "To, you know, have this money and be able to spend up to $450,000 for feasibility engineering and bidding for the Plymouth River window project."
Since there's already the money allocated by the development agreement, could we submit the SOI, and then if we get accepted, use that development money for the feasibility money?
Well, that's what I'm suggesting.
And then we don't have to go to town meeting?
Oh, no.
And then go for the balance?
Yeah, I think we still have to have it appropriated by the town. I think we still, we'd have to have, even to spend it out of that window account, I think we still need an article where the town says, "Hey, we know they set up this window account. Yes, School Committee, go ahead, go spend that, use that money for that purpose." And I don't think we can get it out otherwise. I think we have to have a vote.
All right, well, can we find out?
Yeah.
If we need to?
Well, there's no other way of getting an appropriation, Liza.
What?
How else are we going to get an appropriation of using that money?
You need a warrant article to spend that money.
Even though it's already allocated for the project?
It's, maybe, it's earmarked for the project in a particular count, but I can't imagine how you're going to get it out.
We can start putting that out.
But I, I mean, I think we should go ahead with a statement of interest because we need that, we need a functional elementary school, and Foster's another four years away, and so we need to take care of this project right away. But I'd like to know if we get the funding from the state. We should try once, at least.
Oh, yeah, but yes, SOI, I think that's a separate vote. What I was talking about now was a placeholder for a warrant article.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. But I'm just wondering if because there's a million dollars already allocated.
Right.
Do we have to go to town meeting to get access to that money? Or can we, is that sitting there so that we don't have to? I don't know, George, do you know?
I'd certainly check with council, but I can't imagine how we'd get the money otherwise.
I don't know the language that surrounds that money.
Yeah.
It may be some that restricts the use of it.
It is restricted to Plymouth River.
Specifically replacing the windows as opposed to doing the preliminary work that I think John was suggesting.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know the very specific language either, but if we don't have to go to town meeting, we can use that money, let's try and get approved and then do it.
Do you want to go?
I was just wondering what this timeline is for, if we were to do an SOI? Like, when would we apply, when would we hear?
We have to do the SOI, it's going to open on the 8th, and it's got to be submitted by the 15th of February, so.
8th of January? Or 8th of?
8th of January, yeah. And it's got to be submitted by the 15th of February. And it needs the vote of the School Committee and a vote of the Selectmen. I mean, we sort of mentioned this back when we were doing the project, when we did the walkthrough with Foster, you know, to sort of prepare everybody, knowing that we wanted to kind of go forward and do an SOI. You know, this was, this discussion is about trying to get an appropriation or an amount of money set up so that if we were to get accepted, and as I said, we could make it predicated, but maybe we don't want to make it predicated, because even if we don't get accepted, could we still use the money and get another appropriation to do the construction?
When would we expect to hear after?
Probably June, July, I think. Now, I mean, knowing too, see, and the reason why I say, you know, perhaps we don't want to predicate it on being accepted by the MSBA is because we know from going to the meeting this year that the MSBA didn't do any window projects.
Right.
So we don't know they'll do window projects next year, or the year after. So, you know, and we know that the, so, you know, how long do we want to wait? It's, you know, because there's energy efficiency issues associated with it. And, you know, and frankly, we do have to continue to maintain and repair our buildings, right? You know, I really take events when we're getting criticized for not maintaining our buildings when we ask for capital every year, okay? And I suggest articles like this, you know, so that we can maintain our building. And they say, "Well, you're not maintaining your buildings." Well, that's because we're not getting the money. There's no way of doing this stuff without getting adequate appropriations. That's all there is to it, so.
So again, long-range planning, met this evening, and this was part of the discussion. There's a consensus that due to the fact that the deadline to submit warrant article is coming around, we would like to actually recommend as long-range planning that we allow the Director of Business Service to do a placeholder, and he can actually investigate the proper language and everything else. But we are to believe that if he does a warrant article for the windows, utilizing money that we already have established on a account, that on comments of the warrant article, a advisory could cite, you know, that, that we have, you know, applied for an SOI, and that we hope to get money from the state for accelerated repairs. But we're not going to put any restriction in there. It is actually the recommendation of the long-range planning. And I invite my colleagues, Dr. Schreier and Ness, to say anything else about it if you wish to.
I don't think we should make this contingent on getting approval from the MSBA. I think it should be just a clean warrant article that they appropriate the funds regardless of being accepted into the program or not. You know, like we saw this year, we, there was no school that got money for windows or furnaces or anything like that, and I don't think we should wait.
Dr. Schreier, anything else?
I agree with Ness. This is a project that's long overdue, and I think we should proceed, no.
Yeah, and I'm terrified too, because I, I'm saying, we're doing the SOI, and this vote will be in accordance with MSBA language, and we'll talk about the possibility of MSBA, and that we're going to wait, and, you know, I'm just saying, this time, let's not put the contingency in, because we could get the money appropriated, and then we could, we could do it, we could not get accepted, we could say, "Okay, well, we'll just do it again next year, we could not get accepted." But the thing is, when it gets to the point where everybody gets sick and tired of waiting, or if it does get to that point, then we can just sort of move forward as a town ourselves and, you know, go for an appropriation to sort of get the, get the project done, because, you know, with such an appropriation of the 450, we'd be able to get the design work done, the architectural work, and the bidding documents done, so we'd be ready to go out at any point. But I'm not saying that we'd just do it automatically and go. We have other things, you know, Foster to get into motion, there's going to be limited resources, but just don't put the contingency on it. Same language, same everything, but no contingency, so that it's not held sort of at bay. It's so much of a smaller project. You know, I mean, up to 3.2 million dollars, and if the MSBA contributed some, and we have the million that Alliance has contributed some, it, you know, it's not that much for the town for a beautiful building, I think, in my opinion. I've always said it, that this town can get many, many, many more years off.
So I'm in favor of going ahead with this, asking for the feasibility money on our own, that's fine. If we get the feasibility and we begin the work, and like, we submit an SOI the second time, can, do you know, can, are we restricted from applying?
I don't think we'd start the work, Liza. I don't think I would recommend starting the work. I would ju, yeah, I think we'd wait, and we'd talk about it, right? We'd talk about it. Do we want to, you know, hey, okay, well, let's do another SOI next year and see if we get it? Or maybe we'd say, you know, we as a town, the School Committee, the advisor community, everybody as a town, no, let's just go forward and get this one done.
Yeah.
Okay? Because, you know, we can do that within two years before we probably even break ground on Foster, so.
But I would say, we want to weigh the cost benefit of waiting.
Sure.
You know, there's heat that's pouring out of the vision, and as we've seen with Foster, costs go up.
Yeah, and I'm in favor of getting the project done as soon as possible. If, but if we, I'm just, if we think we're going to get it, and we spend the money, and then we're not eligible because of that.
We've got the benefit of it being a summer decision.
But it sounds like it's, we should just do one shot and move ahead with the project.
Another point, too, I don't know if you mentioned already, John, based on our visit to the MSBA, we heard of the accelerated project that got approved. None of them, did you mention that?
Yes.
None of them was windows.
So it's just, I'm for waiting and getting in there, it's nice to be ready to go instead of, you know, because we wait a year. I mean, as a business manager here, it's like, okay, you know, we get by April, and then by and large, I mean, unless we're talking about a big project like a building where we're going to have a special town meeting, we're not going to say, "Hey, we have to have a special town meeting to get a million dollars to do windows at Plymouth River." You know, not at our taxpayers, or, "Hey, we had this happen." So that's why my view is, let's be proactive, let's get the money appropriated, because it's from an account that's not funded by the taxpayers, but for the taxpayer's use, let's have it sitting there in right terms for the MSBA, and let's move forward. And that might be a good selling point to the MSBA, "Hey, we already have our feasibility money funded, you know, let us in, we're ready to go, let's do it." And then, you know, we have a building committee, maybe, you know, we could get the money, you know, under the building committee authority, and they can build two projects at once. Or get the windows done, and then they'll be ready for Foster. So I think we have a lot of things that are set up here.
Yeah, I'm in favor of getting it done as quickly as possible, you know, and also of having a warrant article and taking out the contingency. Could you just check, though, and see if we actually have to do a warrant article?
I will, yeah.
Because we have a number of them, and so if we can do one without.
Absolutely, yeah. I will.
The only thing I was thinking, even after I said it.
It might, it probably does make sense to do the warrant article because it tees it up for the balance, so.
Yeah.
And the warrant article could state that there's already a million dollars sitting there for the project that this could draw off of.
Yeah.
But then you pay the balance, either the town pays the whole thing, or we get even more grant money, so that, to reduce the final amount. So from a communication standpoint, it unfortunately makes more sense to lay it all out.
There are other ways to communicate. I mean, I'd just like to know the answer.
Yeah.
Find out who you paid to.
Ray Estes, private citizen. I'll just share my two cents on this topic. So four years ago, we tried to get support, when I was on the School Committee, for an SOI for the PRS windows. At that time, the Selectmen were not inclined to support it because of thoughts about firehouses and other capital expenditures that were going to be happening, or at least they thought. None of those materialized in the interim, interestingly, and four years later, here we are with having not pursued an SOI for the PRS windows, so I'm gratified that you're doing that now. It does need to be done, it should have been done a decade ago. I'll defer to John if he's done the research, and those are the numbers, but when we researched this four years ago, the comp we used was the Wolf Pit Elementary School in Wayland, and it was a million eight total project. It wasn't split into feasibility and installation of windows. So we're just talking about some windows and doors here, and I'm not suggesting that it's a million eight, maybe it's more than that now, but that was a number four years ago. I don't know that it's necessarily two and a half times that now. Maybe some more investigation into that. The other thing I would say is, this is the type of project that's going to be done in the summer, okay? So if you don't hear from the MSBA until June or July of 2020, you're not doing the work this summer, so you would be doing it in the summer of 2021, which means you have another town meeting in the interim. Just a suggestion, this is just my two cents, okay? And if the million dollars allocated by Alliance pursuant to that development agreement, I don't think there's any specific language, by the way, with respect to, I don't think it's that specific, I think it's pretty general. You get an answer from the Selectmen and council on the use of that money, and then if you do get the invitation in the summer, that money is available, you don't have to go to town meeting now, you can wait till next year. Just, so if you get a couple more answers in the next couple days, right, you can, you have a lot on your plate this year, it looks like, just a suggestion.
Yeah.
But, but, so this is a summer job, for sure. So it wouldn't be done until 2021, assuming we're waiting for the MSBA at the earliest. And you have another town meeting in the interim, so just a thought.
Okay, that's fair. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't talking about doing construction this summer, I was just talking about making the money available to get the feasibility and the design work and the engineering work associated with, making sure that's available, so that if we did that, we might be able to get some type of pricing, and then next, next April, we would be able to get the money for the rest of the project from the town.
Right.
Just, that was my thinking and my chronology, so.
Okay.
So let me make sure I understand what Ray and what you're saying. If we are able to use 450,000 of the million dollars, whether it's with a warrant article or it's just the fact that it's available for the right reason.
Right.
Are you suggesting that we then start the feasibility study ASAP?
No, if MSBA invited us, we'd be able to say, "Hey, we have our feasibility money, can we get going?"
Okay.
And we go within the context of the MSBA, we get the design work done and the architectural, we'd probably be able to take it out to bid, predicated on getting total funding, you know, in April of 2021.
Yeah.
And then we could have our jobs scheduled for next summer. You know, we could just, we just make the money available for us. Otherwise, if the money isn't readily available, Liza, because it's been allocated, we would need to get an appropriation from that bucket.
Right.
For the feasibility and the construction work, between the time we get accepted by the MSBA and next April, then we'd have to go out, get the design work done, you know, do whatever bidding's necessary, get the design work done, and sort of get our projects scheduled. And chances are, we wouldn't be doing it next summer, chances are, we'd be doing it the summer after. Just, just the way the timeline would work. We may have until next April to get the money for the design, for the architectural, and the feasibility. If we got the money there, we could do that work, we could take it out to bid, but we're not going to get the job done during the summer. It just is, that's April to, you know, there's not enough time, and plus, all the vendors were already have their jobs lined up, they know what they're going to be doing next summer. So that's why we just wanted to, you know, try to get a little bit ahead of the curve, or have at least the money available so we can start work immediately, and then get the construction funding, would be the next April of '21.
Okay. So the question is, we need, do we need a warrant article if it's this April?
That I can find out.
Yes, is that it?
I will call it on and find out if we need a warrant article to get money out of that window account.
Okay. Okay.
And we need to schedule a vote for submitting the SOI?
Yes.
Yeah.
And at first, I have to go get the language for that vote, so I've done some research on the SOI, just haven't had tons of time to know all the details, but, you know... But, you know, I know the general process.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so we've got some more questions on that one. All right, 6.3, to discuss a possible warrant article for repairs to Building 12 and Building 179 and act as appropriate, if we get that far. Do you want to give us, John, an update on 6.3?
So, okay, 6.3, I mean, the Building 12 and Building 179, as we know, the traces and robotics had got, the word, had to, relocated from Building 12, you know, due to, due to the building not being suitable for occupancy, okay? So, you know, with that, we actually have an engineer and part of that, part of the building commissioner's order was to have a engineer go study it and come up with some type of plan on what you may do in order to put that building back into compliance. And then, you know, that plan necessarily, you know, would then go to the building commissioner. You know, and the plan would be, the plan wouldn't be, oh, okay, here, let's get it all set and it's gonna be perfect. Is there a way to sort of phase that plan and get it there? So put that plan in front of the building commissioner so the building commissioner can determine whether they think that's suitable or not, okay? Or, you know, hey, well, you could do this, but, no, you have to do this, you can't delay that. You know, perhaps something could work out. I don't want to sit here saying something would work out because I don't know. Because I don't know what that plan looks like yet. I know Habib's looking at it. They're trying to do the study and they're gonna create that plan that the building department wanted. But in any event, whatever it may entail will require, of course, money to try to put it into place, okay? Another piece of that could possibly be Building 179. Some of you that have been on the committee for a long time know that Building 179 and 120 and Building 12 have been kicking around for quite a few years, okay? I know, I've been here nine years. When I came here, it was there. And one of the plans was, well, we could relocate traces over to Building 179, would have to sprinkle the system and maybe would have to do some renovations. Maybe that's an option that could still be in play, okay? But once again, that would take some money and that was nine, 10 years ago. I don't know what that price would be today. I don't know if it's a half a million dollars, I don't know if it's more. I don't know what the price would be for Building 12 yet, you know. Alls I know is that it's big, it will be big numbers, right? It's not gonna be 20, $30, $30,000, it's gonna be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's all I can sense, but I will know more information. So this, this topic was put on here for the purposes of your discussion to see, do we want to put a placeholder in? Because when I put a placeholder in, I don't need to put the money right away. I mean, we just want to know, hey, the school committee is gonna come forward with a warrant article for Building 12 and Building 179. Of, you know, some money and the article would be crafted as such and then we'd have more time to get results from these reports that the people are doing would know, you know, would that be acceptable by the building department and we'd have more information.
Is the master plans, the town's master plan study committee, are they, aggressively, are they, with emphasis on those two buildings?
Those two buildings are, along with a lot of other ones, are something that's under consideration of that whole complex of what makes sense for multiple departments to reconfigure usage in town. So, because we know those need to be renovated and rec needs space, senior center needs space, there's square footage of land there. So that is something that is under consideration. I guess with this.
Just the two buildings. I understand there's a lot of other property there. But do you expect that the building committee will come in with a strong recommendation on those two buildings?
I think they may come back with a recommendation of looking at that whole property and what's, and looking at all facilities across the town for everyone as opposed to those specific buildings. The master plan committee is not gonna get into that much detail. It might end up being that the master plan committee recommends hiring a consultant to do an evaluation of facilities, including looking at multi-use space in that area for various departments. But I guess on this one, that is one of my concerns of investing a lot of money in these buildings without having a plan. But do we need a warrant article to lease space in another area for the traces program? I mean, is that what we should be thinking about? If we need to lease them space in another building, do we need extra money in our budget to cover a two or three-year lease? As opposed to, I don't want to ask money for these two buildings when there's so many variables up in the air right now. We don't even know what it would cost, I mean, does it make sense to tear them down and rebuild something else?
And also because the need is for the space is immediate.
Right, right.
It's not next school year or even, heaven forbid, next, next year, right? It's, they need the space now.
When you mentioned leasing space, something truthfully I hadn't thought about. Have you given this some thought? Is there space available to lease?
There's gotta be a warehouse somewhere.
Well, I mean, the old light plant was thrown around, I don't know what happened with that.
I think we're still looking into that.
The South Shore Collaborative Old Space over in the industrial park was, I mean, there were places thrown around.
I was waiting to hear back from the light plant first before we go any further because I'm waiting to hear back from the town administrator on the light plant first to see if that's an option.
You know, the beauty of this space was just its proximity to the high school, for one thing.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the industrial park, I mean, I guess I'd ask maybe Paul if he could say something. I mean, that's not a bad option. I mean, there certainly would be space up there, but it certainly would be like a little longer commute when they lose a little classroom.
Well, I mean, we talked about Talbots, we talked, I mean, we were throwing around a lot of different options that personally I'd rather immediately take care of the students. And if we need more money to do that, but if we need a, I think we need to think through more what we really want to do long-term with these buildings. And that's where I'm going.
No, I do too, I'm going.
No, I don't.
On Building 179 and 179 specifically, because I think I've heard this, is that we can't change the footprint of that building, correct? Like they, if something ends up happening in the future, we can't knock it down. Because of the, something about the.
No, you're talking about the wetlands?
No.
The National Park?
You're talking about Building 12?
We're talking about 12.
No, 179.
No, 12. 12 butts up right against wetlands. And there's a real.
There was that.
Real, I mean, butts up against wetlands. And there's always been a concern about doing any kind of renovation, demolish, what have you, yeah.
But wasn't there something about 179 because of the, like, the recreation? That they weren't gonna let us do anything to the building?
That's correct. They couldn't sort of like utilize that area for other type of, you know, service other than recreational.
Recreation, but then, but then I thought that they said that we couldn't do anything to the building either. Like they wouldn't be able to demolish it. So the town wouldn't be able to demolish it in the future.
That I'm not sure.
If that building, you're talking about 179 now.
Yeah.
If that building were to be expanded as was proposed by, for instance, the recreation department, that would be, absolutely allowed it to be done.
Right, expanded but not demolished.
Yeah, that didn't happen.
I don't know.
It was a national.
Yeah, it's like some national park, something.
Yeah, I think we'd have to look into whether rules there were enough, but yeah, I hear what you're saying.
So if we were going to.
We can't demolish it, but we could add on to it, we could, for its purpose, which would be for recreation and.
Right, so we would need to put sprinklers in there regardless in the future to use it. The town would need to put sprinklers.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'd have to be, we'd have to be renovated.
Man, last years ago.
We had, you know, everything if we were gonna occupy the space, have the space occupied, yes.
Okay.
It sounds like you have a few things to do before we come back to you with.
Yeah, I think, Paul, do you want to speak again?
I think that the immediate need is probably, as you were just mentioning, if we're looking into a study and how we're gonna, you know, remodel this building to make it useful, it's gonna take a long time.
Yeah.
It's gonna take forever. So I think as you were mentioning, something like the light building, that's not that far away from school, John, the proximity is a big concern. But just what you were saying, if we don't look into something immediately, then we're gonna be, end up stuck where we are. And I don't know if the light building is a possibility or another building to lease. But that would seem to make sense because I've been teaching for over 20 years and there's been talks of what we're gonna do with that building for years and years and years. And it's just, again, seems, it will take a lot of time.
Paul, what do you think of the industrial park?
I mean, I'm just looking for areas to look. I mean, I thought about leasing before, but I had no idea what we have available in this town.
I just don't know, John, the industrial park, I do know that.
Distance-wise, I mean, proximity is that, you know, if there were space up there, how would?
You know, that could work for now. It wouldn't be, if you said, would that be a great spot for the future?
Yeah.
I'd say not so much, but that could certainly work, yeah. And the one thing that would be a consideration too is when we did lease something, just we have to move some machines and things like that. You know, and that's all doable.
Can I ask, Katie, what about robotics? Would, in proximity, you know?
Absolutely, so the robotics team is our.
Katie Roberts, Science Director. So the robotics team is already in season, so the kickoff was Saturday. I just wanted to express my appreciation to Paul and John and the maintenance department. They got right on it, moved all of the equipment that we needed over. And our great neighbors, Paul and Rory, over in the wooden auto shop made room for our students. And so I do think that we can probably stay put through our season, which runs through March. The nice thing about our program is that we're using the space when they are not. So we're talking evenings and weekends. And so I do think at this point, the students are settled in. Katie Hartman is going to provide a trailer outside for us to store materials so we can be good neighbors with the wood shop and the auto shop. So I think at this point, we probably can make this season work in the current space. It's not ideal, but we can make it work. And again, just, we feel very supported by the maintenance crew and the senior administration in making things happen quickly. So we're in, we're settled. I think we can have a successful season. And part of being engineers is working with design constraints. And so this will be part of the learning opportunity for our students. So, so again, so thanks to Paul and Rory. And so we would love to dovetail on whatever happens with Paul's program, but our time is right now. And so even if we were able to get in someplace in the next month or so, it might not be worth it for us to move in the middle of the build. So I think it might make sense for us just to stay put for this season. But certainly would love to be part of any conversations about what we'd like to rent or renovate in the future. So, thank you.
Like what if even we bought, got modular classrooms that we tagged on to another building? Even if it was the middle school or something for the traces program? And that's gonna, yeah, I think we need to look at the options for immediate. And I would support a warrant article of, I mean, modular buildings, it might be a one-time cost as opposed to an ongoing lease, but.
No, I agree. I mean, I'm sort of, I'm disappointed because I, with the traces program, I mean, it is an immediate need and it was something that we talked about. And I, I thought that the, the fix had, was more appropriate than just squeezing the traces program into the high school. And, I mean, I think it's important, I mean, and I think sometimes this is something that people in the town don't understand about what the role of the schools is, but it is to meet the needs of all students. Not most of them, not some of them, but all of the students. And that includes the 19 students in the traces program. If there was one student in the traces program, it is our responsibility as a district and as a town to support the needs of those students. So we need to find immediately good space for those students to learn. So, and if that's going to take money, it's going to take money. And I think that is something, and sort of, John had alluded to this earlier, that, you know, there are some comments out there sometimes that we are not appropriately spending the money that is allocated to us. But that is actually not what the issue is. The issue is we are not getting the appropriate amount of money allocated to us to spend. And I understand, as we all do, that town revenues are restricted and limited by the tax revenues. But that doesn't stop or doesn't end the fact that that's, we need the money to do the things that we need to do to keep on top of the capital, so.
There's a real question not maintaining buildings.
Yes, exactly, as we see.
How long have you been asking for, to renovate Building 12? Do you know how long?
My nine years. Our nine years.
Nine years, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, not spending $100,000 10 years ago is gonna cost us, who knows what, 10 years.
Yeah, and as Michelle had mentioned at our past meeting, we're really lucky, nothing happened with all that. So I'm the same way, I think the immediate need is finding an appropriate space for the program. And if we need to, you know, start looking at what we should do with the buildings, we should do that, but that's secondary.
Yeah.
You know, we've always been sensitive to the town. We're not looking to spend everybody's money. So, I mean, we have said, okay, we're gonna hold this off. But, I mean, it turns out that these two buildings, you know, we, many of us say we've been kicking the can down the road, right? You know, so we're pushing it back and we're not saying, you know, hey, we need to do something. But it's sort of like, none of these things would be pushed back if we thought we would get the needs that we need. You know, we have to go with something responsible, although, you know, it's getting, it gets increasingly difficult. And even with our responsible budget, those end up getting cut significantly. And therefore we have to push more things, you know?
And it's not just the school department, right? Every, every department in town finds this, right? Fire department's been looking for capital, the town hall needs senior center and the South Shore Country Club with the pool. I mean, what is, you know, how sad to lose that asset of that community pool that we had because we weren't able to maintain.
You know, Paul, Long Range Planning had a meeting at Building, we sat in Building 179 and a comment was made, looked to repurpose. Just a thought, I did a field measurement, that means every stride is, the square footage of the bus barn, the bus barn, is 21,840 square feet. The garage, and we all know.
It's shared by everybody.
Wouldn't be too difficult if the inclination was there to capture, shoot, Paul's numbers, the square footage.
That white building, that's condemned too. Nobody can go in that building.
It's not, well, we don't, we use it for vehicles and storage.
Yeah, you can't go in that building.
Can I just say that I don't want to waste any more time right now discussing what's gonna happen with Building 12 and 179? We've got a, that's gonna take, that's a long, long, long-term thing going on here. Town needs to deal with those buildings. We have an emergency on our hands right now and we need to be talking about where we're gonna put these students. I'm so glad you came. Thank you for putting faith to this, to this. I really appreciate you coming. Gary, thank you, yeah, no, that's, and for sitting through all of this.
There's a lot more people gonna come.
You're gonna go back and say, you're so glad you didn't come.
And, and we need to be finding, like, we just need to focus right now to find a space and find the money, if it's emergency funds, wherever it comes from. They, we need to move all of the equipment for the traces program to get up and running again. It's 19, you can't squeeze 19 students in that classroom. It's not a classroom, it's a closet. I'm still trying to wrap my head around that. You've put it way too mildly.
You've put it way too mildly. Like, not in a, there's just no, it's a teeny, it's a little space. People need to understand that. It's not appropriate. Sorry?
Plus the other freshman class that comes in.
Yeah.
So, I have a question. How fast could we get a modular classroom if we were to, to go that route?
The one concern with that might be moving the equipment inside.
I, I'm still waiting for that. We've been playing telephone tag. Unfortunately, we've not done that. We have a couple of things. And I think there's some things that we can research and bring back to you for, you know, we can report back to you on, on Thursday nights. We have a better answer. Um, and, and we appreciate, I know, what the, the program is doing and, and what you're trying to make up for right now. It's, it's, um, something that, as you know, we've, we've talked about, making sure that it's a top priority in giving you a, a space that's permanent. I think the idea with Twelve and One Seventy-Nine was, in the long term, that's probably a good place for that. If we can, if we can consider rebuilding that, that's a great location. We still have some irons in the fire that we have to, what are we gonna do right now? Uh, and those are things that we need to work out. So, yeah, absolutely.
All right, so moving on to six point four and six point five, uh, the warrant articles, potential warrant articles reimbursing from insurance proceeds, um, for the fire at the high school and the flood at the East School.
I think those are much easier, Michelle.
I certainly hope so.
I think so, thank you. I know.
I've been waiting to get to those.
All right, take it away, John.
They're, they're, they're just, they're just housekeeping, these are housekeeping warrants. Um, the, the, you know, Mass General laws, any insurance claims over a hundred fifty thousand dollars, they have to, um, they, every, all the money goes into an insurance claim. You know, it's either over a hundred fifty thousand or under, under fifty, a hundred fifty thousand. The unders is all handled by just administration, Sue and myself, and we'll say, hey, you gotta transfer this twenty-five thousand. It used to be lower, you know, but, um, the law has changed, so now it's a hundred fifty thousand. So, both the fire and the East School flood, they both exceeded a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So, the money's been flowing into those accounts. Um, and the, in April, we'll need to, um, ask the town, can we take the money that's, we have been reimbursed by insurance from those, um, from the fire and from the flood and move it back to the school budget? Approximate values, I don't, you know, I, I know these, the flood, the, uh, fire were upwards of, you know, six hundred to seven hundred thousand. Sue had something worked out at the end of last year, so I'm not sure exactly how that's gonna, um, work out. And we haven't closed the case yet. So, you know, I won't know the final figures until after we close the, um, the claim, where we know how much has actually gone in and how much we have to get back. Um, and, and so far for the flood, we're looking, you know, closer. I, I've seen checks to the tune of four hundred thousand dollars right now. I expect that to grow a little bit more. We have some cabinets to do, and then we have some other final stuff to do. So, um, you know, so there'll be two big ones. And these, um, these are housekeeping and, and they're just insurance recoveries. And, you know, um, everybody will know the work has actually been done and it's been completed. And we're just asking to have that money transferred from that account back into the school budget, 'cause essentially, the school budget's paying for it now. Fortunately, we have a big budget, so, I mean, we can float a little bit of that money. But come near, you know, April, May, when, when the money starts getting cut, uh, tight, you know, it gets, um, it gets, you know, we'll, we'll be negative. We'll be in the negative. So.
This might be a dumb question, but is, would it be possible for, if in the future, when things like this happen, to have the town pay the bill in the first place, since they're getting reimbursed, since the town gets reimbursed?
Um, it's really, the, those accounts are shared by all of us, Carrie, so, I mean, it's really not the town, um, it's not necessarily a town account. I mean, they're, 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 they're special accounts. It's sort of a special account. So, um, and I don't think the town wants the administration of having to, you know, pay all, 'cause all the invoices come in, we have to track it. We're, we're sort of accountable for what's happened. If, I'd love it if there were a resource to deal with all these insurance claims because, you know, it's really falling to my office and me. And it's a lot of work when you're trying to pay them, get the invoices off to the insurance agent saying, hey, you know, or the claims adjuster, you know, making sure they have everything and then looking at their tallies and trying to reconcile them and stuff. But there's no other resources in town to do that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, John. Even if the town had paid for it, they'd still have to go to the voters to ask for them to be reimbursed.
Oh, yeah, the town has to do it as well, right?
So, it wouldn't matter, you know, because they, they can't-
Good point.
They can't appropriate money that they have, that they've received that they didn't count on. So, this is new money, and so they have to ask the town to be able to use it. And so, it doesn't matter where, who pays it. Um, the town has to give us permission to, the people have to give us permission to use it.
And that law's kind of set up because, you know, you may have a catastrophe in a building that the town doesn't care so much about, or the people. Right? So, it's like, you know, if something happens, it's like, and then, you know, if you don't have the people act and say, yes, no, we want to give that reimbursement, use the money for that purpose, um, you know, theoretically, they wouldn't have to. You don't have to repair your buildings. I would ask the entire town, please allow us to repair these buildings and, and allow these two articles for the insurance recoveries to happen. Thank you.
All right. Uh, sure, if you wanna make a motion.
All right, let's try. Um, I move that we, um, authorize the business director to draft a warrant article seeking reimbursement for the insurance account, um, for the fire at the Hingham High School. John, is that, that covers?
Yeah, that covers, yeah.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we, um, authorize the Director of Business Service to, um, seek reimbursement for the front insurance account for the flood at the East, at East School, um, and bring the money back to the school operating budget.
Second, maybe, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, great. Two out of four, not bad.
Two out of five.
Or two out of five. Uh, sorry, not, not so good. You failed. Um, all right, and that's it for the warrants.
Yes, that's the round.
All right.
Here's actually, can you give everyone?
Six point six is to receive an update of capital requests for fiscal year twenty-one and act as appropriate.
It's gonna be part of that conversation.
This is her. All right. Um, is John doing it?
Um, well, I can start that. Uh, so, we met tonight, again, Long Branch Planning has been very busy. This is the third meeting that we, um, held, uh, to address capital, uh, needs. Um, so, right now, we started two point seven, and we are ready to go to capital outlay with the two point two million dollars. These are requests from the various, uh, school departments, um, for capital improvements. Um, we all talk about, um, all these issues happening with our schools. You know, we just talk about three items, right? Um, and there is some people out there that may think that we don't conduct preventive maintenance. A lot of the times, we are not doing preventive maintenance because we don't have the money. So, every year, we go before the capital, uh, outlay to present our requests. Those are major needs. There needs to be taking care of it. And unfortunately, because we never get the money that we asked for, uh, a lot of the projects are just put aside. So, you have in front of you, um, also, um, you know, the last five years, the requests that we conducted, we, we went before the capital outlay with requests in, in two thousand fifteen for twelve hun, um, one point five, one point two million dollars, we got six hundred and forty-eight thousand. And you move all the way up until last year, uh, we asked for one point eight million dollars, we end up with nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, let's hope that by asking for two point two this year, that we can actually get the two point two. It, it's, it's very sad that, you know, a lot of the times, I remember leaving myself and, um, Dr. Schreier went before other groups, CPC, to ask for money to do, you know, some, uh, renovation at the playground at, at Plymouth River. And some people, they will say, and you guys already have too much money on your budget. You have five point four million dollars. Well, they don't quite understand that the five point four is for operating, that eighty- What did I say? Five point four? Sorry, thank you. Fifty-four million dollars. Thank you for the correction. So, we want people to start understanding that, you know, um, our capital improvements only are taking care of it with this money that we get from the capital outlay. And we need to do something about that. Um, people say that we're not taking care of our building. We're not taking care of certain things, not because we don't want. We want to take care of them, we just don't have the money. So, with that, um, we are going before the capital outlay on the twenty-second, uh, and ask them for two point two million dollars.
Sorry, January twenty-seventh or twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
January twenty-second is the Capital Outlay Committee meeting. And this number may change a little bit between now and then. It may go up ten thousand. I mean, you know, we looked, I know I have to add ten thousand, but it's, that's the general area. And we'll have a more refined number, um, you know, before that happens at one of the workshops.
And, right. And I mean, I, I mean, I understand, I mean, the Capital Outlay Committee has a, has a tough job, right? They only have X amount of dollars in their budget to ex, to expend across the entire town for all-
And it's probably two point four million, you know, I mean, and so, it, that's, that's the thing.
I know. So, I mean, I'm hoping that maybe that's something that the Master Plan Committee is trying to figure out. How do you reconcile this math problem, right? That there's not enough income coming in and the expenses just keep going up, right? So, at some point, it's an old joke in, um, it's an old joke in corporate America, right? We don't have an expense problem, we have a revenue problem until, and then we fix that. And until, unfortunately, if we, until we fix a revenue problem, we're not gonna be able to fix the expense problem that we have. So.
The other thing, Michelle, I think we have been talking in town about, uh, we need to do something about, uh, I mean, as part of the, the money that we got last year, the nine seventy-five, um, over, you know, over four hundred thousand is, you know, focused on technology. Um, so, we need to sort of like, find a way of moving technology to the operating budget versus, you know, keeping it capital. That's another, would free up some money to do other-
Recurring, yeah, recurring technology.
To happen every year, there's no two boom, two ways about it, you know? Um, and, and we go through a capital process to procure it, which is, doesn't, yeah, I'm sure back when we first started this process, that made a lot of sense, you know, but technology's permeated our buildings and our lives so much today that it just is recurring in nature. And it seems silly to say, hey, I need another five hundred thousand dollars worth of technology here when it should be in the operating budget and growing, you know, like an operating budget may grow.
And I think also, I mean, you have to give priority to capital investments in safety and security as well, right? In this day and age, right? That's new-ish, right? That wasn't, you know, those weren't concerns twenty years ago or even fifteen years ago. Um, so, those have to take priorities as well. So.
So, if someone makes a decision to move the technology item from capital to operating, who, how do we, we just say, do it?
Libby, we could, we could say, okay, hey, let's move it in, right? Then, now all of a sudden, you know, wherever our budget would come out, we need five hundred thousand dollars more. It, it, it doesn't matter the mi, it's not gonna develop a, a different bucket of money, you know? It's just gonna be, um, that's what has to happen. That's where it belongs, I think. It belongs in a recurring operating budget, not into a capital budget where we're trying to say, hey, here's what's going bad, and here's what we need to replace, and here's what we need to do big time preventive maintenance. Here's the major repairs that we see coming forward, you know?
So, we do that for, maybe, not this year, but next town meeting, April twenty-one, and we say, okay, the operating budget ask has gone up by, what's the number, five hundred thousand, because we're moving the technology into it. That doesn't mean that our capital ask is going down any.
No.
Right, right. So, the town has to do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a matter of figuring out how to fund all these things. I mean, that's the-
Right.
And I'm not pretending I got any answers. I got a lot of questions, but I don't have the answer about how you can generate more revenue, but-
Without an override?
Right, without an override.
So, right. Is that like the white elephant in the room that we're, you know, when do we start talking about an override?
I'm a- And I, and I don't, well, I mean, and I don't think that's, and I don't think that's necessarily just, I mean, I wanna, I don't want anybody to think that that's something that the school department is asking for, right? I mean, this is a town-wide issue. So, I wanna be very clear. This is not the only department in town that doesn't have enough revenue to meet their expenses. It is every department in the town. So, right. So, that's what the, we have to, as a town, and town departments and elected officials need to figure out, how are we gonna get additional revenue to cover all the expenses?
So, that's that.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for your work on that. All right, um, so we, nothing to do on this tonight.
Do we, do we need to vote, John, that this school committee, this is our budget?
Uh, for the capital?
Yes.
I think we, well, you know, we may meet again, right? We possibly, we meet on the thirteenth?
Yeah.
Are we doing capital at the thirteenth?
Yeah, to go, to go over-
That's right. So, yeah.
We may, and if not, it's, if it's not the thirteenth, we'd, you, you could vote it by the sixteenth. But we just wanted to make sure the committee had the list so that you see all of the items that, you know, comprise, uh, the, the two point two million dollars. And then, you know, by the way, this is a five-year, four, five-year budget, right? So, you see that, you know, the next year is like loaded. It's like seven million dollars. I mean, you know, in the summer, you know, the, the year after three point five. All of these things eventually have to get done. And what happens is if we push them into one year, but not everything necessarily pushes out, you know, it's not sequential. Like, you push it to the next year, that loads the next year, but then next year, that may roll in and you push it out further. So.
Just a clarification. Is the list that Carlos emailed this afternoon, the list we're still talking about, or did you change it this evening?
That, well, we did, it's going to be a few changes in there, yeah, like John did mention.
So, then, can you make sure that the list gets put in the packet?
Sure.
Because it wasn't in the packet.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question from the, that list. On the P A system for the high school, there was, that was budgeted for this year. Do you know when that's gonna happen?
It's supposed to happen in February, Carrie.
In February?
Yeah.
There's been a, there's been a, uh, some coordination issues with getting a couple of projects done at the high school where, um, you know, you, you have to make a little bit of noise and, um, we didn't wanna necessarily do it when students are there and we're trying to get it done, but the, the timing issues developed, so February is the, the date for that.
And just so my colleagues understand, the capital, uh, requests as well, um, so you'll see on the, you know, the spreadsheet that you got that we have items spread out all the way up into twenty twenty-five, right? A lot of the times, we want to make sure that things are here for the eyes to see. So, there's no surprises. Uh, individuals out there cannot say that we didn't ask for this, right? We, if we have something coming up that we think that in another four to five years, we're going to need the money. We want to place that here right now. We may not have a dollar amount in front of it. We may have zero, sometimes one dollar. But that's just to make sure that everyone is, is looking at that several times. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's also worth noting that, um, the school department has gone, has gotten some grants to help offset some of these expenses, like the recent security, um, grant that we got for the locks change out at the, um, at the schools, which is important, right? So, we were trying to be proactive in finding some ways to fund these, um, things. And is that all, are those, are those are all set?
The locks are being done in February as well. We had an issue with the locks too for timing purposes, but, yes. But, I mean, and that's true. And, and keep in mind, we get those grants, but we'd still need more, right? I mean, you know, those are, those are good. It's not, um, you know, and we got the Green Communities Grant too, which has allowed us to do a couple of additional projects, um, you know, that we do along with the town. Um, we got a hundred and forty-two thousand last year. So, right now, we're spending about sixty. The town has to do the, a pump at the, on a downer street. And once they know that, any residual will come over to us and we'll be able to do more, um, energy efficiency lighting at the, uh, high school.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're just holding off the other piece of that. So, um, but, yeah, the Green Communities is good. And, and this is, this is good money, it's good funding, but the- good funding, but the security grant, you think of it, you know, $57,000, and the Green Communities, $142, it's $200,000, but the needs of this town are enormous.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So we can get grant money, and we try, and we do, and we use it, and it really helps, it helps in the areas where it's intended to help, but we're still going to need more.
Yes, understood.
How do we figure out what grants are available, and who is, who's in charge of writing those grants, to, to request those grants? Do we have a grant writer here in Hingham, or is it you?
No, it would be, it would be me, whoever saw the grants, or Michelle Montzger at the town, or Suzanne. You know, the safer schools, I ended up writing the last one, April, you know, I had to spend three days writing a grant, get it in on time, and then they wait six months before they give you the money. Their timelines don't work.
And how do you find out about all the grants? Like, what process is there to figure out what grants are available? And are we missing out on opportunities because we don't necessarily have?
I think our legislators tell us a lot about grants, I mean, there's other hunting that can come on, I mean, we all have internal networks of, you know, our peers that are out there, and, you know, usually if there's good, right grants, you know, everybody sort of knows about them, and, you know, you'll, you'll sort of apply for them. I'm sure that there are others, too, Ness, but, you know, we don't necessarily have time to go hunting for the $10,000 or $15,000 here or there.
Yeah.
You know?
That is a good question, so if there's anyone out in the community who's a grant writer and would like to volunteer some time, I'd be happy to hear from you. All right, anything else on capital? Nope, all right. All right, so item 6.7, we have a homeschool application in our packets. Does anybody have any questions for discussion on that? I'm sorry, I can't find my, I think it's, I just had it up here, sorry. Does anybody have any questions on that or comments? All right, somebody want to make a motion to Carrie?
I will make a motion to approve the homeschool application of Troy and Isaac Calverson.
Second?
Second.
Oops, sorry, was that Liza?
Sure.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed? No? All right, great, thank you. And we have some appointments, Alyssa Zimmerman, a new para educator at PRS, welcome, and a retirement of Jan Bickford, one of our bus drivers, so thank you, Jan, for your years, oh, yes.
I would just like to add, Jan.
Thank you, you are well-loved, and you've lived in this community for a very, very long time, and are a very beloved member, and we're sorry to see you go, but enjoy retirement, have fun.
I would second that.
She was in on the second, you know?
Of course, so enjoy.
I would second that, she took great, great care of my kids and our neighbors, so, thank you.
That's great, yes, thank you. All right, and then there were, there's a couple of resignations in your, on the agenda items. Item number seven, other items not reasonably known, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. I think the only, I just had one thing, just rescheduling or unscheduling the January 21st meeting. I had sent out an email to see if folks were interested in canceling this regularly scheduled January 21st meeting, in lieu of the fact that we have so many budget meetings coming up, and then I think at least one of those budget meetings will include a regular session meeting. So are folks good with that? Yeah, so no meeting on the 21st?
That's fine, John, I mean, in terms of warrant article, they have to be submitted by the 20th, which is a holiday.
The 21st.
So.
They got to be submitted by the 21st, because usually they go the day after.
So you don't, you don't, yeah, hopefully by then, you have all our votes.
We'll have all, yeah, we're going to have all your votes by the, the next Thursday, you know?
Yep. And then the other, there were a couple items on the agenda, but we can move those to February 2nd, Pam, check that the folks, program of studies was due for the 21st, but we'll do it at the February 2nd meeting.
Most likely, I'm not going to be here the 22nd, that Thursday.
Okay, for the budget, for the budget meeting.
The 22nd.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right, well, that is good. Anybody else have anything for 48 hours? No? All right. Subcommittee and project reports, I'll just go around the table, start with Ness.
Well, we had a long-range planning meeting today, I think we've heard enough about that. Haven't. We haven't had another East meeting since our last meeting, our next one is on January 22nd. And then Metco, we met, there were some teachers, and the Metco director, and Michelle and I, who met today to debrief on the Metco Educators Conference, so we met on, with them today, and just coming up with ideas on how to, you know, better represent our students who are here from the Metco program, and making sure that they feel welcome, and just talking about different, different ideas. So, that's all I have.
Spread the love.
Spread the love.
Yeah. Okay, so now that we've just canceled that school committee meeting on the 21st of January, I can go to the HEF meeting on the 21st of January. So the next HEF meeting is the 21st, and I will be attending that. And the next South School Council meeting is January 29th, and the next Community Outreach meeting is tomorrow at 8:30 in the morning, and we're going to be pulling together a fact sheet for Foster, and figure out how we're going to disseminate it, and what we're going to use it for, and what it's going to say, and all that good stuff.
Seller negotiations will cover an executive session. January 15th is the next master plan meeting. At our last meeting in December, we just debriefed on all the visioning sessions, and we are getting into taking topic by topic at each meeting, and talking about policy. So it'll be more in-depth on the committee, but more to come. And Foster, the PTO meeting today got postponed, it'll be February 3rd, and then the next school council meeting is January 15th.
Happy New Year to everyone, it's old news. Attended the well-reported long-range planning meeting, so.
Okay, so for policy, I will send out an email in the next couple of days to set up a meeting and follow up with MASC on the policy manual. I also wanted to state, say that we're aware of a petition going around regarding the chemical health policy and the MOU at the police department at the high school, and as you all know, the policy subcommittee will be reviewing the entire policy manual with MASC, and that, that policy will be part of the process too, so it'll be on the future agenda for anyone who's interested in following that. Hingham Middle School Council will meet on January 21st at 2:30. Also, the PTO is sponsoring a guest speaker, Joni Geltman, to come back and to talk about adolescent psychology, the parent version, she's supposed to be very funny. And great, yeah. Excellent, excellent, I highly encourage anyone to attend. Do we have a date? Yes, January 22nd at 7:00 PM. And for South, I'll be attending the PTO meeting on Friday, Friday, January 10th. And then for Snap, the winter sports are going, and are, they're off to a great start, they're doing basketball and swimming, and just everyone save the date for Pizza Palooza on March 25th.
March 25th.
March 23rd. 25th.
25th.
High school council will meet on the 8th, long-range planning will be meeting on Monday the 13th. Thanks to John and my colleagues for all this assistance this evening.
All right.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah, pretty much.
That's it, all right. Special Ed Subcommittee is meeting January 15th at 8, at 10:30, sorry, 10:30, and I think we're going to, the focus of that meeting will probably be to do a sort of a deep dive into the Special Ed budget prior to the workshop that we'll have, the budget workshop. And is there all-town PTO this Friday? Or soon? Who's, I just want.
I know Dr. Schreier's on the town.
Okay, Dr. Ed is, Dr. Ed is attending that one, that's what I just wanted to, okay, that's right, because there was not one in December. Okay, that's right. I think that's it for me, all right.
17.
17, sorry, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, that's it for me. Does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session for the purpose of approval of minutes of the executive session of the school committee held on December 16, 2019, discussing matters related to the current HEA Unit A collective bargaining contract, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position, and discussing matters related to the collective bargaining negotiations with the HEA Unit A for the 2020-2023 contract, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
Second? Ness, thank you, and roll call?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, we are adjourned from open session. Thank you.